Citizens may. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, will proceed to make a comment as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order to lengthy breach of personal privacy rights, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a true testee meeting conducted on a public forum. So stand for the reasons. Consent agenda to approve the agenda this year.
Second.
The consent agenda has been approved. Okay, do we have any correspondence, guests, or public participation? Nothing to be signed in? Okay. Um, how about the West Valley parent teachers?
I can talk about that. I was there at the last meeting. They kind of planned out events for next year. So they're going to do like a fall festival. I think they wanted to kind of get some of the stuff on the calendar, a fall festival. Possibly another fun run because they did well with that the year before, a couple of years ago. Fall festival, they're going to do like food trucks and different bingo and different games or whatever. And then I think that was kind of going to be the main, the main ones for next year, whatever.
All right, how about the West Valley Teachers Organization? Anything? Nothing tonight? If we just had the meeting.
It's almost summer break.
Okay, how about the principal's report? Coming from the middle school, there are currently 340 kids in grades five through eight. Hiring is about complete depending on your decisions tonight as a board and that we're through with the interviews and such at this time. And there's upcoming concerts. If you look on the school website, we'd like to invite you to come to the concerts. We'll be having your fifth grade and then the middle school concerts. And the promotion ceremony is on Wednesday, June 8th at 6:00 PM. And then I'd like to invite whoever ends up being the chair to hand out the promotion certificates. And if the chair is unable to be there, then any review is invited to join us to help with handing those out. And the promotion certificates are granted to us through the county superintendent. Jackie Aginsberger's office prints them out and then we hand them up. And that's at 6:00 PM on Tuesday. So, and we help with all the process. It's the nice, the formal part and giving that to the students. You want to help with that? And the Sback, the summative testing for the state, summative testing, the Sback, which is the math and the English language arts. And then the MSA, which is the science test, are about finished up in middle school. So tomorrow is our last and formal day of testing and that would be the science with fifth and eighth graders. And then we are into the, just the makeup process for students who might have been absent or for whatever reason. So that process is going really smooth this year. It takes a lot. Tanya Doitt helps organize that for the entire school. And then Terry Dierenfield helps with setting up the middle school schedule. And then they proctor and support along with Crystal Thurman and Mark Wilson. And so it's a lot with the IT and getting computers ready and things. So anyways, it's gone really smoothly. And so we're glad for that and kids seem to be holding up well. They've reduced the length of the tests and I think it's been noticeable. The state, they all reduced tests from last year. So that's been nice. And that's it. Thank you. Okay, do we have a report?
Richard is not here today.
Okay. All right, how about superintendent's report?
Nothing too much new here to report. We did get a, we're going to be working with, I don't know if you know, Martel Construction. So every year they do like a volunteer project in the community somewhere. And so we've got our shop going in over here. We've already got the shop. We've got all the, you know, materials for it and everything. And they're actually going to assemble it for us. So it's quite a, a big deal for Phil. It's probably what it took him, you know, a while to put together and it's going to take them probably three or four days, you know? And so that's a kind of a nice thing to get off this summer list of things to do. And, and it's a good volunteer thing for them. They like to do the community outreach. So it's great. A good deal.
What's the, the starting date for the new superintendent?
July 1st is when they normally start.
And how long are you staying on for?
June 30th.
Okay.
So. So I, I've had a little bit of contact with her, but I think her contract, where she's at now is through July 1st. So I don't know exactly how that's going to work.
It's going to be tight. Okay.
But I'll help out if you need to. I'm good.
Thank you. That will be the case. Um, okay, the action items, we organize the board. We. Okay, we get the swearing in of board members. We've all, we've all been sworn in by the superintendent, right?
Correct.
So that's. We just have to report that we have any backup, our little certificates somewhere to go. So that's done. And now we need to elect the chairperson for this.
I'll make a motion to nominate Marilyn Headstrom as board chair.
I would actually like to nominate myself as chairperson. I'd like to actually speak a little bit about why.
Okay.
When the time is right, if the others' discussion wants to be held, it's fine.
I think, I think it's right now.
Yeah, well, I think honestly, I've been a part of a lot of boards. I've been a part of a lot of departments. I've been chair of those boards. I've been chair of department meetings before. I come to this with good intentions for the kids. I want to see the school succeed. I want to see the kids have a great time here. And by doing that, we need to all just blend together and start working together. I want to hear from all the teachers. And I know there are some that come, but there are some that don't. And there are some that don't speak up. But I'd like to, as chairperson, actually reach out to people and I want to encourage them to come and I want to hear from them. I want to be more open and encouraging to the members of the public to come in and speak. I think there's a lot to be learned from them. I mean, their kids are here in school. And even those that don't have their kids in here, I think they have a right to come in and then speak your mind. And I think there's been some adversarial interactions in the past. And I think people, when they come feeling like they're going to get cut off when they speak, try to cram things in and then become more anxious and more nervous to speak. And they, they aren't feeling welcome to come and speak. And so I want to break down that bridge too and allow people the opportunity to actually say what's in their hearts and what, what their kids deserve them to say. And the admin as well, I think, you know, we just need to hear from everybody and bring everybody back together and make the school amazing place that it can be. But I've, I've had the experience of running boards. I, I understand that I am one person in this board. The chairperson is not the decider. It's not the Gestapo. It's, it's just one person here that really needs to unify this board and bring it together. So that's why I would like to do this.
Okay, well, you know, I guess I just need to speak. There's a lot to, to a board, a school board that is, really needs to be learned. And there's a tremendous learning curve. And not that I know everything, but I have, I have been involved in a lot of the, of the studies and the, and I think that. Yeah, I, I, everybody, this is for the kids. It's really a difficult thing to try to listen to everybody and all the different ideas. And then consolidate it into something that is agreeable to everyone. I, I mean, I'd like to be able to do that. I think the fact that I, I got that, the number of votes I did in the general election said something about the, the public was happy with what had happened the previous years, even though they were difficult. And hopefully we won't have to go through another COVID thing. But I think, I think that there was a, that was like a verification of what had happened here. So I guess I'd like to continue that on. I think that, you know, there's just a whole lot of cooperation that needs to be in, in between the board. I'm just really unfortunate, it's just really unfortunate that my friend isn't here tonight and that, you know, we're going to have to bring on another board member. And so I, I guess. That, I don't, I don't know how that, we're going to handle that. We only have two.
I'm just.
Two board members here.
Glad you rubbed it in. They beat me in the votes.
I'm sorry. It was meant to be a compliment.
Well, I have made a motion, so motions on the table.
Right. We need to vote on it.
Presumably Marilyn could second that motion.
I can.
She'd like to.
I will second that motion, Jeff's motion. Well, okay, then should we, with that discussion, so we have a discussion. Does anybody have in the, have anything to add?
Other than I'd like to also reassure people that I've, I've read the policies. I've read the MTSSBA procedures and policies and laws and rules. I've read the state laws and I'm really to continue researching and learning more about them. It is a difficult position, but even though I've been here for a year, I'm prepared and I'm ready for it.
Should we call for a vote then? All right.
Can I decide one thing?
Sure.
Uh, what would it hurt to table it until you get two more board members? If you're running the meeting now and you figure out who's going to fill chat spot and we get connection with Brent, what would hurt tabling it? I mean, it's only what, two or three more weeks till the next meeting?
In the, you know, I think it's. I think you got a good point. I think, I think in the interest of trying, you have a cohesive board perhaps that might be an idea. What do you think?
Because then he will find you at least. But to you, just as a question.
And, and okay, then in essence, the board has no chairman. I'm, I'm sitting here now because I was the vice chairman last time. Okay. So we essentially have no chairman.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think the bylaws may require us to actually vote in a chair and vice chair within a time. It's, I think it's before our next meeting, we'd have to do that. So.
Within a certain number of days.
Correct. Yeah, I'm not sure the exact number of days. I know it wasn't done. But I feel like it's, it's business on the table.
That was May 27th.
I, I feel like Marilyn, you know, she has the most experience on the board. She was reelected and beat me in the votes. And I think she has the desire to do it. And I, you know, I have my support behind her. I would suggest that we move forward with both.
See, I think she's been, and like that, okay. Should we call for a vote then? I can go for myself, I assume.
Yeah.
And so it's, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Of Marilyn being that board chairman? Okay, opposed?
Aye.
Yeah. Okay, then we, I scary, and I'll be chairman. Um, now we, next order of business is to elect the vice chairperson.
I think Justin is, you know, having the second most experience and obviously a, a large interest in, you know, kind of serving and, and you had a, you know, a notable reason to run for, or try to be the chair. I'd nominate you for vice chairperson.
I'll say that. Okay, does, any discussion on that? Anybody, anything you'd like to add there? Okay, should call for vote on that then? For Justin to be vice chair? All ayes or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then motion carries unanimously. So we've got our, our chairman and vice chairman. Next is to appoint a clerk. And technically Cecilia needs to be appointed as the clerk of the school board. It looks like she's here and she's, it is part of her.
Before she puts her pin down, I nominate Cecilia.
She has so many hats. When we did the evaluation for her, I did not realize how many hats she wears. But this is, this is a big one. And I'm, I think we would be very grateful if she'd be willing to serve as our clerk. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so that's an appointment, not an election. So.
It'd be an all three ayes anyway.
Let's assume, okay, you've been appointed clerk. All right. Um, the next is the consideration as the resignation of trustee Chad Grace. Who knows more about that than I do? Anybody? Okay. Email.
I just sent an email. It went to Cecilia.
Right.
Yeah, it just said that, that this traveling with the schedule, it just was really conducive for him to be here.
I think at one point.
That would fill.
Yeah, I think at one point he thought he'd be okay when we had that one meeting with him and probably his situation has changed. So do we, do we need to move, to vote to accept his resignation now? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the reservation of trustee Chad Grace.
Okay, are there any comments? All right. Should we call for the vote?
Unfortunately, second.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead. Just second.
Yeah, I'll second.
I guess I could second it to anybody. But anyway, okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the resignation of Chad Grace. All in favor?
All right, just in the open discussion part, I would just like to say that I heard this through rumors outside. And unfortunately, when somebody told me that, I said, well, until I hear it from here, more I see an official,
Yep.
official information back to me, I would reserve not to comment on it. So I just would hope that in the future, if board members do hear about this, and I know we were in limbo, board members in and out. But I would hope that communications would go through all of us. I don't know if anybody else had heard about it before we saw the meeting agenda or heard about it on the street. But I think that's a board we should probably be hearing these things as quickly as possible.
I think, it didn't go through the emails?
I think you just sent it to me and then I forwarded it to Colin. Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Because I think it was just last week that we got it. So it was pretty quick.
But I agree with you, Justin. It is just, you know, it's a sensitive topic. So you get approached in the, in the community. It's nice to be in the know before, you know, the general public.
Yeah.
I realize it's also not.
Related to the board or that.
It's really not always possible sometimes.
Initially, when he put his, put it in, he didn't put a date. And so it has to have a date on it. So that's where I go back and get it from him, make sure he had a date on it. So that was a little bit of a delay. But yeah, no, we got it out right after that. So.
Okay.
Apologize for my turn.
This is school, so you probably get a mark.
All right, um. Okay, and. So that means we've accepted it and.
We have to open it for vote now.
Yeah, going forward. All right. Anybody have any further comments? Well. We'll entertain a vote to accept the resignation of trustee Chad Grace.
Aye.
All in favor? Any, anybody not in, okay, unanimous? All right, going forward then, consideration of the board vacancy announcement. So we need to announce that there's a board vacancy.
So we'll put that in the, in the newspaper and we'll put it in, we'll take it over to our share to the, to the parents and whatnot that get that. So everybody has an opportunity to apply that wants to. And that's really all it takes is an application to Cecilia, letting her know that you're interested. We'll open it up for two weeks. We thought that was plenty of time to do that. So that gives us a little bit of time before the board meeting, the next board meeting. And then we can decide at that point in time. Depending on how many applicants we get, you know, how you guys want to go about that, doing it either before the board meeting, having a, you know, interview session with those folks or at the board meeting itself, I guess you could do that too. So.
I'd like to get somebody placed for the board, maybe if we could, if we could, if the time will.
Wait, teleport.
Of course, we've only got three weeks till the next board meeting because.
Yeah, you'll have just about, so 13th of June, I think. Yeah.
Yeah. So we would, okay, okay, so. We'll see how, um, how many.
You have 60 days to appoint somebody, up to 60 days if you need it. And then after the 60 days, then it goes to the county superintendent to appoint somebody. So if nobody applies, then you'd be in that situation, I suppose. But even if somebody does, you don't necessarily have to pick that person, the people from the group. So, yeah. Assuming you would, probably.
So the end of two weeks?
Yeah, so we'll put it in tomorrow as soon as we can.
Then we should, then we should. Should we schedule a meeting at the end of two weeks now? Or do you think we should wait?
You could, you could, you guys can discuss that. That's not how it's going to be this day.
Well, no, that's what I'm asking the board if they think that we should go ahead and, and go ahead with that by the way, or, you know.
Well, we could do one of two things. We could schedule a meeting like the day after the closing.
Right.
And then we could invite those that applied to come and speak that day.
Yes.
Um, I think we should probably table it for a decision. And then maybe return that following week or whatever for our next board meeting and make that a decision. Or we could wait and hear from everybody at our next board meeting and then make a special meeting to appoint. I mean, it all depends on how many people actually apply, right? We can do it all in one night if there's only one person, but. I would hate to make a decision on the spot when they just get a chance to speak. That doesn't seem, seems odd, but not that we couldn't do that too.
Okay.
Just my thoughts.
Sophie.
Jeff, Brett. Yeah, I think your, I think your first schedule makes sense, you know, have a meeting of the potential candidates, you know, shortly after the two-week window closes and then we can have time to, you know, consider those applicants and appoint at the next board meeting. Potentially they won't. I'm not sure if they would then sit on the board for the remainder of that meeting or if they'd have to wait until the next meeting.
Think they'd have to be sworn in.
I think, yeah, and then that would be, I think that's.
Only if Jack could be here for it, I guess. If that was the case, if you did it before him.
Might have time since it's not the first meeting in May and he's not running everywhere else. Um, and it sounds like, just so we're clear, this is an appointed position, not an elected position.
Correct. So does that put it under the one-year cycle?
Yeah, he's got two years left on his term. So he'd have the, whoever gets it or he, she, whoever gets it would have to run again next spring.
I got you.
And then the next spring for the three-year term.
I got you.
Right.
Unfortunately, appointed positions can only be one year, not two.
Okay. So. We need to vote on here to.
Motion to open the board vacancy announcement.
Open the board vacancy announcement and, and do we need to add then, add, and have a meeting at the end of two weeks for this?
No, we can just schedule that.
We'll just do that unfortunately. And then that'll have to be announced for 48 hours. We have a meeting and all that. Okay, so was there any motion for the acceptance of the board vacancy announcement?
A second.
Okay. And help, any, anybody have any discussion? Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody that doesn't want it? We'll do that. All right, um, we'll go on from there to the consideration of new hires. Cal, do you want to give us a rundown on these new hires?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So like Tina was saying, we've had some, some really good interviews. We don't, we don't, we didn't have as many candidates as we normally have, but they're quality candidates. So really feeling good about the folks that they're putting forth. I will say, I don't know if Tina wanted to go into this or not, but Katie Doll, is that how you say her last name? Yeah, there is a possibility, I mean, she's gonna, there's a deal with her husband, basically, where he's a researcher, I think, for the big batteries and different things. And there's a possibility he gets a job here, a possibility he might get a job in Bozeman. So she's going to accept the job. But there's a chance that, you know, his husband may take the job in Bozeman too. So it's just one of those things. But we have some backup plans for that as well, hopefully for that. So just, it's just the nature of where we're at right now with things, you know, that, plus the fact that, you know, you're getting people who are accepting jobs initially and then housing market things change their mind. You know, it's unfortunate, but we're seeing that, not just here, but in the valley in general. So, so anyways. So yeah, we've got great candidates, really good specialized candidates there too, with lots of years of experience, which was nice. We'll have some good experience in that, with that position. And I would highly recommend all those folks for positions.
Could we, in the future, is it possible to get these, their resume linked as part of the agenda?
Yeah.
That might be helpful.
Absolutely. You can also attend, I mean, every, every, I don't know if you guys realize this, but every interview is actually an open meeting interview. It's not just a superintendent one. So any interview we do, whether it's a custodian, a teacher, anybody, they can all, anybody, anybody can come to it. Actually. We need to post, yeah, yeah.
Motion to approve the new hires, Katie Doll, Tim Roush, Melanie Homegun, and Nate Kingbrough.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Anybody have any, anything they would like to add?
So any immediate questions that you have? I don't have their items right with me, but is there any, any immediate questions you have about any of those candidates? Just since you were asking.
I know, I didn't.
Might be helpful, I guess.
Have any, it would just be, you know, nice to kind of see, again, kind of their experience, where they're from. But I don't, I don't have any immediate questions. I'm just really grateful that we're able to find candidates and actually hire them. So that's wonderful.
If there's no further discussion. Should we, okay, all in favor of the new hires?
Aye.
Any, anybody? So that's unanimous. And then again, the next one, consideration of coaching hires. Again, Cal.
Yeah. All the gentlemen on the other list for the football positions have been there before and they do a great job. They only did a great job with the, the football part of it. They're really good with the kids. And that's actually more important than, than the football, it's, it's a nose and all those kinds of things. So Clay's been doing it for quite a few years now. And so has Jared. It's been with him for quite a while. Mark was new last year. Sam's been helping out for a while in chat. So I think they're all quality guys, quality individuals. They do a great job with kids. That's why I recommend all, all those coaches for football positions.
Entertaining motion for that then, that, so I have those coaches.
A motion to have this coach through.
That's second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay. Call for a vote. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, go on to the next one, consideration of coaching hires. Carla Scott for the seventh grade. Okay, go on to the next one, consideration of coaching hires. Carla Scott, the seventh grade volleyball coach.
I'd say the same thing about Carla, I said about the football coaches. She does a great job with the kids and really is knowledgeable about the sport too, played it, you know, and understands it, but also can teach it, which is, you know, very, like, at any age, but that's how her, but, uh, she does a great job with the kids and, and is, uh, like I said, knowledgeable about sport. So that's what you want to coach, so does a great job, so I'd highly recommend her for that position.
When is the motion for that then?
I'll make a motion to hire Carla Scott, the seventh grade volleyball coach.
Oh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed? Okay, uh, the next consideration of resignation of Rich Nickerson as athletic director.
So, so Rich has been doing that for, for a number of years, and, uh, he has some interests outside of school that he wants to pursue a little bit, which would take time. And that, uh, we know the AD position takes a great deal of time, so he didn't want to shortchange that position, basically, and not give it the full that it's due. And so he chose to, uh, to resign in his position, just the AD position, you know, for, uh, for this year, and, uh, I think it's a good move for him, you know, and, uh, he did a great job. I thank him for the, the work he did, and a lot of fundraisers, you know, tournaments, different things to raise money and, and, uh, did a great job in this time there, so. See him go. That, for that position.
Yes, yeah, he'll still be a PE teacher at the school, right?
History.
History. Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the resignation of Rich Nickerson as a, as AD. A second.
Any discussion? Okay. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
So just as a side note to that, Maryland too, if I can, that's okay.
Yes.
I know we talked about the fifth and sixth grade basketball.
Oh, yes.
Uh, last time, and when I told Rich, since we're starting over with a new AD, and I talked to, if this issue's approved, to look at that in the future and maybe not do it for the next year and just kind of see how it goes, or maybe a different, I want, we want to see if we can keep the fifth and sixth grade going, you know, for a little bit. And so, uh, it may look a little different, you know, I don't know exactly what it would look like, but we still want those kids to have the opportunity to play, you know.
Did we, did we not, um, was it not a motion?
No. It was just.
Information from it.
Okay.
And I agree with that too, just because, you know, the alternatives on the table, travel basketball isn't a feasible alternative for most families.
It's expensive.
Yeah, exactly, and then, and then rotary, you know, we have to make sure before we close this program down that rotary has the capacity to accept her, these additional kids. So I think that's a good move to try to keep it, uh, going forward, at least until we ensure that there's a viable alternative out there for all these kids.
Yep.
Hey. Then, the next would be then, uh, consideration of Terry Dernfield as the new athletic director.
So when Rich put his resignation and we opened it up in the staff, and, uh, we, Terry was the only one that put in for it. I think Terry will do a good job. She's very organized. Uh, she has coached for quite a few years. She won't coach anymore. She'll just take on the AD, if you approve it, the AD position. And she has some ideas about looking at that fifth and sixth grade program too, to make sure that we can keep that going and keep it viable for a while anyways, and so, it's mostly just about time logistics and trying to figure that out, you know, what people want after practice at, you know, six o'clock in the morning and things like that, which might still happen, you know, to some degree, but, uh, she has a little more time during her day to be able to handle things as they come up too. It was one of the things that Rich had a hard time, because things happened all throughout the day where changes in scheduling and different stuff like that, he might have been in class, so he didn't have a set time where he could actually work on that necessarily. And Terry's schedule walks busy, is a little more fluid, you know, where she's not necessarily in class all day long, so that helps too. So I would highly recommend her for that position too.
You said it was open, was it like posted as an open position?
It was open just within the staff, just so we have to do that by policy.
Okay, yeah, but we don't, uh, do not have to open it for applications from the public.
If we find somebody interested, yeah.
So only, only if Terry hadn't come forth. Then. So. We need to entertain a motion to make Terry Dernfield be athletic director.
A motion to make Terry Dernfield be athletic director. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I, discussion first.
Yeah, oh, discussion.
Yeah. Um, not that I have anything against Terry, actually, I enjoy her as a person a lot. I just worry about her commitments to the rest of the school, and I wish she was here to kind of speak on that part of it, because it is an overwhelming position and very, very busy position. I think that had a lot to do with, uh, maybe speaking for him, but I think I had a lot to do with overwhelming filling of fifth and sixth grade basketballs being cut too. I just want to ensure that she has that opportunity and effort to be able to put in what it takes to do this, and Tina's, is here, I don't know if she wants to speak on behalf, but I mean, I would love to hear from you.
So, I'm working with Terry, she works as our middle school or empty coordinator, so she works for interventions, and she's a five oh four coordinator. And we've been able to get her out of the classroom. She's not in the classrooms working. She did during the COVID times, it was odd, she had to step in and teach in the classroom. But her day is fluid, like you were saying. She has her administrative degree and her license, and she understands the legalities of these things. She's coached, she schedules, she's organized. And I, you know. Yes, she will have to make personal choices of, am I coaching or am I being an AD, you know, and that's a choice she's made and stepped forward to. And, but I would say that she has flexibility in her position to be able to handle what comes up with the AD or to step in if needed to a night game or, you know. You want to be at the different ones that she needs to be at. Not better, I mean, not show up.
Have you ever considered having an assistant AD as well?
Well, when I first, when we first, when I first took over here, they had it actually, it was worked out where the AD basically did the scheduling. And then somebody else did the, the administrative duties at the games, and so it was separated out, and then about three or four years into that, Nick Hansen took over as AD and wanted to completely combine it, so that's where it became one, where that person did the scheduling and the administration and all the different things that go along with that. So it became one person at that point in time, so it may get to a point, and then if they can't be there for the games necessarily to administrate, that somebody else has to be appointed. In which case that, the AD, he has to pay that person part, because that's how their pay is done too, so it has to come through that, so. I'm not sure if we're at the point where we need an assistant necessarily, but maybe something more like that, or spread out.
So there's options from that standpoint.
What would you have the assistant do?
It was solely based on the comment that the position was overwhelming.
Yeah.
Uh, for a single person, or just to try to, to spread out the workload, but, but no specific reason.
I think it was more overwhelming because that person who was doing it, and, and people that have done it in the past, were teachers in the classroom, you know, most of the day, and then they have one prep period. Well, during that prep period is when they got most of the things that, that they could. However, a lot of times, and there's a schedule change during the day, like a game, where a referee can't make it, or, uh, it's a snow day, or whatever happens, you know, where you have to make those calls. That's when that teacher had a harder time, you know, finding the, the moments to do those things, you know, where Terry's schedule is a little bit more, I don't know, the right word, flexible.
Well, I agree with the flexibility. I mean, she can construct her day in different ways if something should come up, and I agree with you, but sometimes it's helpful. You know, what they do right now is if someone can't be there, they'll ask certain ones of some staff if we can be there, if they're not able to be at a game or attend something, or if it's getting heated somewhere else, or having issues at other places that we can go and just kind of help support our, you know, to be there.
And one of the reasons we did that, when we combined it, is we had several people doing the administrative duties out there, and as you all know, when you have several different people doing it, it's not consistent necessarily. So that consistency piece is one of the big reasons we bring it to that one person, you know, doing the whole thing.
It might be something to have, that the person that you have, have them log kind of what they do or how many hours it takes and decide whether it needs that in time.
I, I think in part, it's, it's, you know, it's ultimately up to her, but, you know, I need to, to go a couple of years down, and she's burnt out, and then it might be something.
I think it's good in all the stipend positions to ask them to log hours, just to kind of see, are you in line with what it, what we're paying and what it actually takes and doesn't require something more, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's not just even the scheduling, is it being available during the day, it's attendance of games and after hours and weekends, and it's, it's a lot of time, it is.
Yes.
So I guess we need to be in communication with Terry on that one.
Yeah.
And mention to her that we appreciate if she can keep track and, and she feels overwhelmed to feel free to ask for help. You know, maybe if it's, if you said it as an idea for her. Okay, any further comments? Are we ready to entertain a vote on that then? All right, all in favor?
Are.
I. Anybody opposed?
Cecilia, I'd just like to mark mine as abstaining from voting, please. And I'm not because I don't like Terry, I just think this position's huge, and I think in other schools, it is a set-only position, that's their only job, and I think that's set for a reason, so I would have loved to see it open up to the public, but that's not how the chips lie, so, it's okay, I'll support her.
All right, next. Again, that is, oh, bunches of changes that are made there. We want, well. These are always so. How do we want to handle this, the changes that are made to the rules of, uh, West Valley? Most of them are dictated by that state.
Are we, I.
The first one?
Interlocal agreements?
Yes.
Those two are both under the I there, so they could be approved at the same time, so basically you have the plan that's fed co-op preschool, uh, and then the, uh, co-op interlocal agreement, you know, that we do every year with the, with the sped co-op, and so basically, it's for, you know, preschool kids who are high, special needs essentially, and so if they qualify for that, uh, for the preschool, then A and B comes out of, you know, like, we give them our A and B, which is the amount that we would have for each kid to go to that school, so same thing with, uh, uh, crossroads if that were the case too, so it's any of those interlocal agreements are like that, so, and it's, you know, it's what we have to do.
We have no.
We actually don't really have a choice with a special like that anymore, so.
Yeah.
No, not really.
So that was, yeah.
I was curious why the contract actually labeled a actually specific disorder, not this, left it open, it's like this, or related, and it was like, you know, it's pretty much everything, I don't know why it had to list it that way, so I was wondering about that language. And then when we have students who actually take advantage of this, uh, yeah, anyway, getting, getting an opportunity to utilize this, then our reimbursement comes.
So we actually, it comes.
We paid to the co-op at the state.
Not for that one, so that would be A and B, so just like we get A and B for all the kids here.
Yeah.
We get the A and B from those kids.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah, that's what I meant, okay. Thank you. Um, motion to approve both items in I, the funded special and co-op. Programs. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Um. Call for a vote. All in favor?
I. I.
Anybody opposed? It's, well, now, we're now into the interlocal agreement for next school year. All right, can, that's, now Jay, consideration of renewing certified and classified staff.
So you should have the list of all the people there that are certified and classified. I believe I counted thirty-three classified, forty-five certified. And then we have twelve that have been approved or will be approved by you, that are new hires as well, plus we have a couple more I think left to go, so that gives us over the ninety mark there altogether, you know, and so like I said, when I came here ten years ago, it was fifty, I think actually it was fifty. So, that's pretty good, actually, uh, growth rate there, and, uh, I mean, hiring really great people, present company excluded out here for the most.
Motion to approve the certified classified staff for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, any discussion? Call for a vote.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry. I can, uh, call for a vote. Is it, anyone, if everyone in favors, I. I, anybody opposed? All right, okay, consideration of the technology mentor position.
So this is something that, that we've talked about quite a while as an admin team, and we just have kind of, you know, it's mostly with Mark Wilson, because Mark Wilson's the technology director, so we've done a lot of talking with him about it. He's, he's always felt like he could do the job, and he has done the job without the need of extra people to kind of help out on the day-to-day things that, you know, happen throughout the school day. My printer's not working, I can't seem to get my computer on, you know, the different things, it's just teachers need help with throughout the day sometimes. And so we've talked about this for several years now, and, uh, so I asked him, you know, to think about it some more, to put something together that would be a kind of like a, I don't know, a mentor or coaching or kind of just a, like, like a coaching position almost, where this person or these people, if you approve this, would be available, you know, and happy to use their prep time, so they don't get any extra time to do this, and so anything that they would, or, you know, time before school or after school, that they could do it, uh, to help, uh, folks either at the middle school end or the elementary end, we'd have two of that works out that way, uh, to be able to help staff members, uh, with their technology, and I think it's a, it's probably really important this year coming up, mainly because of the, Mark's leaving, you know, for one, so he's been able to, you know, keep it all together, be able to do those things, and then run the school as well and keep all that going. But with the new person coming on board, it would be a good time to, to look at these positions to really free her up from maybe not having to do those day-to-day things. She can still do them, she would still do them if needed to. But I think also looking at the future, always kind of try to be a little bit ahead of the game on things. I do believe somewhere down the road, within the next hopefully couple of years, three, four, five years, you're gonna have another school out here too, which means you even need those kinds of things even more, so if you have those in place before, then you don't necessarily have to create the will as you're building, you know, and so, uh, I think it's a good idea at this point in time to, uh, and, and you do have people on staff, we've talked to a few, but it would be opened up for anybody who's interested in doing it. That would be interested in doing it and do a good job, and understand what the role of those people is, and so we'd have like a, we had like a work form or, you know, we do it on the computer where people, if they need something, you know, they could just put that into a, into a work form, and then just put it into those people, and then they would be able to come and do it, hopefully, you know, it's depending on what, what the situation is, hopefully sooner than later during the day. But they would have to use their own prep time, if that were the case, and it took a little bit of that, or if they could just, you know, go there and fix it. So. The pay scale came up with was basically sort of like a coach's pay scale, same thing, it went up the base. Uh, albeit, this is a little bit different than the coaching pay scale, as a coaching position is like a, for a certain amount of time, like an eight weeks period. This is a year-round position, where you're doing it, you know, and there might be some days where you do a lot, and there might be some days where you don't do hardly anything, you know, to help out, but, so he's gonna do all those things that I think is needed, and most schools have this in place, especially bigger schools, you know, that, that, uh, or technology's a little bit more challenging, and, and, yeah, they get, uh, somebody there quicker, so I would entertain any questions you have.
What base wage did you use to, the, the wage?
Say that again.
Which base did you use, the teachers?
So it's the base, yeah, the base scale, okay.
I just have a question, then, you know, I, I understood that this is what Mark's position was, is to try to be a tutor for people who have.
Part of what he does, yeah.
Okay, Dean, can you do? position was, is to try to be a tough shooter for people who have part of one of them, okay, can you address that?
I want to speak a little bit of this if I can, this is a case, but and in a former school, we had these that were specialists or helpers that would help us with the tech, the tech helpers, because so much of what Mark does is becoming the systems administration and all of our the student information systems, so almost every single curriculum that we have has an online counterpart and all of those systems have to be maintained and then the student information system itself, which is the infinite campus, has to be maintained. And then you have other things like me calling Mark, things on cameras and things and and we have these specialists that were able to help us, that it might be something about setting up our computers or getting a different printer, you know, like right now my printer is not speaking to one of the, my computer's not speaking to one of the computers in the school and I could put that into the help desk and then they would come help me whether on their prep or lunch or after school or things and expedited things, it keeps things rolling a little faster than what that single person can do. I don't know how many computers we have in the school right now, but I know that we're basically one-on-one on the Chromebooks, but we have, you know, easily over a thousand computers every day in this building and and users and things that are happening within that, and I think that's outgrowing, I wish Mark Strong was a person and a half, to be honest with you. I wish Mark Strong was, I don't know what they're saying, I always sit in my little nook here, but and we definitely could use it. I get contacted a lot in my own knowledge, just, you know, I'm trained up in other things, I'm not always a computer person, but I can see the need for it in order to keep things rolling faster and getting things moving quicker, I don't know what the pay is on it there or what aspects that is, but it was worth having that in our building. It helped teachers help kids faster.
Okay.
I'd just like to piggyback to off of what Cal said, and thinking about the second person, if we know eventually our schools are going to have to divide a deal about when that happens, if you have that person that's worked along the side of Mark, how much easier that divide will become when because a lot of things we use, you know, depending on how the school divides, we use star and third and fourth, but also in the middle school and so it'd be nice to have two people once to go to each school.
So in regards to the the prep time, so this person would be using their prep time to run around and fix everybody's problems or help out with problems and then.
And their stipend then basically helps them because they're agreeing, it's kind of like another job, it's like an additional job, like coaching or else, then they will prep outside of the school hours, right?
I got you, okay, that's what I was kind of wondering.
Their trade-off is then they agree to do whatever prep they would have been doing, you're kind of paying them that time and what always happened, but it will sometimes, and then they're understanding that they will need to work outside of their their contract hours and on their own thing, that's what they're basically taking.
From a materiality standpoint, obviously it's not a whole new hire here, but is this something that you would typically consider with next year's budget? Or it's something that you would?
Yeah.
Consider right now?
Yeah.
Is that something we should review before we approve this type of a change or is it?
You could, and it's not going to affect the budget tremendously necessarily. We haven't necessarily looked at that, put it into the budget, Cecilia, but I know it could sustain it, you know, and so when you start looking at it, if we were a school, I guess, and looking at it, if we were a school or that were losing kids or were stagnant, then I'd be more worried about it a little bit, but we're, you know, we're a school and we're going to be probably sixty-something kids over next year, you know, what we have, and so that's how your, you know, your rate of pay comes in, your A and B basically, it's one of the reasons we haven't passed money, the general levy, is because of that, as we keep growing, 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 which is a good thing, it's better than going the other way, it causes you to have to do other things, you know, try to outspawns and things like that.
Does that money come in a rear, like, the money, well, is it several year or a year at least or?
So you're, so for this year, what we got for our A and B this year goes to next year's.
And so that growth, we've had enough that something in this level, the percentage of the from the general fund would.
But it's a smart question, when does the budget come through in August?
We know, we know right now what we're going to get, we already have, you know, two years, legislative session is always two years, so you know what you're going to get every two years, basically.
Did you guys look at like a possible part-time position, hiring somebody out from the outside, coming in, did you did that?
Yeah, well, we haven't for that one, we we did talk about some like, you know, say like a one-point-five position and we were looking at the possibility of taking one of our staff and using that person point five for that point five for a teaching position, but it didn't really flow into the, without hiring a whole person, you know, because there was too many, you could take a staff member and do that, but then you're taking them out of the classroom, so then you're taking them out of the classroom, you're going to have to hire somebody to put into that classroom here, yeah, so it didn't really flow very well.
But to add one is not available at all, or hasn't been with that.
We talked about it, yeah, I wouldn't say we were, you know, that would be more costly at this point in time, it's going to happen, sure, you're going to need it somewhere down the road.
And that's what I I see that as like, it's going to happen, you know, we keep talking about another school coming, so why aren't we looking at, you know, this is one school, but we should be looking at, it's actually two schools, and so to prepare for what's coming, rather than just kind of putting a Band-Aid on something that's needed, do I get that it's needed? Absolutely, I hear you. But I'm also looking at it as like, a teacher may agree to this, and I understand it's their agreements. Maybe it comes with a price that there is going to be a lack when they're expected to do their prep work at home. And so that's how I view it, I I get that they agreed to it, I get that we're being paid for it, but what does it look like in the future?
And we talked about it with Mark, he didn't feel like he needed that point-five person at this particular time, you know, and so again, that's, we, like you said, we've always tried to look at the future, you know, more so than just the here and now, and we we've been able to do that because we are a growing school and it's better to, it's always, we always feel like it's better to pass it, like, I'll give you an example, when we hired Tina, you serve an example, we didn't, we didn't necessarily have to have a middle school principal right then and there, but we knew we were going to, you know, accreditation wise, so, and it's sure enough, where are we at now, you know, and so we know that with pretty much certainty, we're going to grow five percent every year, we have for the last twenty years essentially, so that's no, even more, you know, in some years. So that's not going to stop, so if we can plan ahead for that and have it in place, I think that's what you're saying, before you need it, that's better than trying to do it when you when you have to do it. So for now, I mean, not that those positions would have to stay in place forever, even.
Sure, sure.
I just wanted to speak to, just in the regular flow of a day, so if I would encounter technological difficulties, typically you know who works near you that has the expertise that you lack, and so finding, say, Nickerson or Emily Black, you know, whoever could quick duck in and do something to help me out and get my day started, I could see someone like that taking the stipend, because the stipend is quite miniscule, I, from what I gathered myself, but I'm just saying, in the ebb and flow of a regular workday, it was a pretty smooth give and take of of just helping out your fellow teachers, and I'd love to see someone who's helping out like that on a regular basis, just get that little token stipend. It it doesn't seem like a big new position, but just an just an added.
They're doing it, you're saying they're doing it anyway.
We're going to do it anyway, so you may as well pay that person who's kind of already helping you out.
It felt like the expense of a high T person who we put out there, they're getting so much on the market that paying the stipend right now might be the way to go. And and also because it's often education sensitive and it's time sensitive like it needs to be and now, and I think for the teachers and especially those in their first half of their career, and a lot of them work second jobs outside of school and having the opportunity for a stipend and maybe that's maybe our prepping outside of school, but maybe they're getting that stipend that's making the difference of them having to get a second job at another location, I think that the stipends, the coaching and those pieces are common ways that teachers pick up to help support their families.
Well, I can relate to this, just in my my previous jobs, we had IT personnel that were hired, paid very, very well to do their job, but in the time, in the moment, they weren't there, and so oftentimes I was solving problems for other providers and doing their computer work for them and having mentors that could go around and help teachers individually would be outstanding, it would just solve so much time delay and people being able to to get through the day of using a computer day in and day out. The old days of paper is gone and we have to fumble through these computers that don't always cooperate, so I'm super in favor of it.
Well, we got smart boards in every classroom too, and, you know, those things, your temperature will go out once in a while, so that can be figured out, so there's it's the computers, but it's just technology.
People who love working with it, see those problems and there are people who would rather throw them out the wind, but having people who love doing it, help others would be great.
And we'd look for people with, obviously with patience, obviously, you know, because there's there's those, I can raise my hand, Mark's by in my office, you know, working with me on one thing ten times, you know, before, and so it's it's the same thing, you know, hey, how do I turn this on, how do I do this? So you have to have somebody who's very, you know, patient with folks and understands that, you know, not everybody's the same place with technology necessarily.
Now, so are we looking at hiring one or it almost seems as if we're talking in terms of more than one?
The policy said two, right? Two positions, one of the middle school side, one of the elementary side.
So do you think you already have those though?
Or we we have a pretty good idea. No spots.
Okay.
And maybe sir, maybe sir, not in the mark, of course, but as a new technical.
Correct.
Right. Then we see how that works and maybe, maybe in the future, we're going to have to be looking at what I'm talking about, but for now maybe this, because this is, this is a step up from what we've had, so if we try this and then as it progresses, maybe we'll be able to.
I wouldn't think constants change, you know, so.
Make a motion to approve the technology mentor position.
There any comments from anybody? Okay, initiate a vote, all in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, considerations first reading of required policy changes.
So for you new board members, this is pretty commonplace, you will see these probably at least once, if not twice a year, where you're getting twenty to, you know, or more, you know, policies to review. So what I've done in the past and what I'm doing this time as well as I'm giving to you the first reading, basically, you can go through them, I go through them and then what I do is just highlight the changes that are made to them and then I send that out to you. And so you can go through them, I can also send you the copies, you can also see them on the MTSBA website, it's probably easier for me just to copy them off and send them to you, the the ones the way they are now, then you have the new ones that you can compare and contrast it to as well, but I also put together a synopsis of what the changes are. Some of them are pretty miniscule, some of them are changing the whole policy basically, so you have to look at those. And then most of these are required, so I'll put that on there too, that shows that they're required or recommended and what I would suggest for those as well. And then at the next board meeting, they actually could be, they could be approved at this board meeting, I don't suggest that, I don't recommend that. I would wait until the June meeting for sure, but on policies we already have in place, they can be approved, the changes can be approved at the first reading at that point, that never used to be the case, but they changed that a while ago, and so that can be done, the new ones you have to have, you're, I think they could be done the second, but at least we usually wait till the third reading on those, so I would just say that the way we've done it in the past works, sometimes what we've done also, there's a bunch of them and we have a lot of questions about them. We can have a special board meeting, you know, and that may be something I'll get down the road to, having a policy committee that looks at those as well, so I think for most of these, I've gone through them, there's not monumental changes to most of them, but I want you guys to have a good chance to look at these a little more time to go through them too, you know, before you make any decisions on them, so if it's okay with you, and we can continue with that that practice.
Yeah, I think that's great, I read through them, but I didn't see the, I didn't know what had changed.
Yeah, I'll send you, so I'll send you those.
Were changes underlined?
Nice to have.
Changes are, the changes are underlined, yeah.
And most of them are just small, they're just.
Yeah, I caught most of all of them, the only ones that kind of struck me as odd is the ones in the the personal conduct and then also the the child discipline one. There was new addings of recordings and recorded conversations, and I think the keyword is hidden, but I just wanted to clarify that that's the keyword, because I mean, as a public facility, it is against a lot of typical, like, can't record things, so. Do you know where that came from, that language?
I don't, actually, but I'll look into it, yeah.
Falling on a thin line of the constitution that we don't want to.
They can't record or.
It says, yeah, record, records or causes to be recorded a conversation by use of a hidden electronic or mechanical device, which may include any combination of audio or video that reproduces a human conversation without the knowledge of all parties in the conversation. Which on private property is something that you can do, but on public property, you can't let it, somebody is electronic recording, recording of others. Maybe the keyword is hidden, but I mean, the constitution's pretty clear on that one, that record people and what policies, how you read them. Policy thirty-three-ten, and it's page two, line item six. Pay a policy fifty-two-twenty-three, page one, line item thirty-seven through thirty-nine. I think, Justin, I think the key there is that, that's hidden, hidden word, because you have to provide all parties with the knowledge that they're being recorded.
I don't have to agree to it, but they have to know it's being.
Correct, I don't want to think it's hidden, I think that keyword's hidden, yes.
I agree, it's the same on private property actually too, when it comes to real estate stuff, we have to disclose it.
Yeah.
It's have to tell them.
It can't be hidden.
Yeah. Okay, I'll go through more of those and then we can talk about it more the next board meeting too, and if you have questions along the way, certainly send them my way.
The rest of them, I didn't see anything else I was worried about or saw, you know, I raised an eyebrow even, so. Typically, do these changes come, are they kind of recommended down from MTSBA?
Okay. Yeah, they do all of our policies, basically, you know, we, you can change any of them too, you don't have to go with what they say necessarily, so verbiage or you may want to change a little bit, you know, from time to time too, so, just depends, you know, some of them are pretty, like, one word got changed, you know, so, yeah.
And fortunately, MTSBA has about five lawyers that's on their board.
You can tell.
So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you could tell, read through.
And for the new board members, reaching out to them is a really, really amazing and easy, they respond very well, that includes the president Lance's immediate on emails and just, they're all good, good people that reach out to.
We pay for, yeah, we actually pay for the service and it's worth it by far.
I'll make a motion to approve the first readings, not the final, first reading, so we can prove the final letter of these policies, one through twenty, listed on the roll.
Okay, is there anybody have the comment on that? All right. We'll entertain a motion to, or with the motions on the table, let's vote on it. All in favor?
I.
I opposed. The motion, yes, now, I'm embarrassed to be, my technology black up there, oh, okay, the next. I'm going to have to borrow your, I can't give back. Okay. All right, the next one, consideration first reading of the new recommended policies, now these are going to be a little bit more.
These are policies we don't have.
That's right.
Currently, so you can't, you can't approve them on the first reading anyways, so they would be the same thing, like, if you can go through those, you can look through them and I'll highlight them, if there's any questions you have about it, and then I believe, don't quote me, but I believe you can, you can approve them on the second reading, which would be the June meeting, but I'm going to check on that to make sure, because I think they changed that not too long ago, and then it used to be third reading for everything, you know, so not that you have to approve them on the second reading, I'm just, one of the reasons I'm looking at this is I want to get these discussed, talked about, and maybe approved before the end of the June meeting, so the new person coming out, this is not the necessary deal. For self, you know, and so we'll go over these whether we get time to sit and talk, so for the most part, you know, I'd like to get them in place.
I thought, I thought we had approved them on the shake-up phone before.
Yeah, yeah. They're good policies.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that can be written, right?
I'm going to have, when we hire this mentor. I'm gonna have, when we hire this mentor.
We're on M now.
We're on M and we need to discuss.
Yeah, so I'm saying, same thing pretty much means, you know, they're new ones, so you can't approve them today anyways, but you're gonna approve them first reading.
These are a little more than just word change.
Yeah, well, they're new, so I think you need to read through that. You know, any questions you have about John and Alan, we just already discussed. So they don't have to be approved at the next meeting. I'm just saying, approving the first reading.
All right, yeah, anybody, anybody care comment on that?
If you just click on the blue ones. They are titled funny.
Yeah, it's not that we can't get to do those, it's actually prohibits those things, I assume.
I did, yeah, I'm able to do it on my phone, so.
No worries.
Actually, we're not gonna hold on anyway. We're gonna have a chance to reconsider these. So can we entertain a motion to consider the first reading? The new recommended policies.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded, is there any discussion on that? Vote on favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, uh, the next thing, the business manager district clerk evaluation. As I understand, Stephanie has take, has met with. Um, Cecilia and gone over the evaluations.
So before, before that, you have to, it's, it's a privacy, personnel privacy. Right, so you wanna give Cecilia the opportunity to say whether she wants to do an open or closed session.
So we can do a closed session after the meeting or, uh, you know, once we're done with the next couple of things, we can have a little closed session after the meeting. Or we can go through it now. It's up to you. Even though there's nothing in it that.
Just the first one, so.
Yes. Anyway, but we'll give Cecilia that choice. All right, so. We need a motion to do the district clerk evaluation in closed session following this meeting. Any discussion?
I think, wouldn't we technically do it, just close the meeting and then, then reopen in the.
And you have to have somebody taking notes during that.
So we can review our information items, then close this meeting and then we'll go into closed session.
I think we should, yes, we don't need, yes, exactly. We're gonna close this meeting before we go into that. Okay, so, but we do need to have a motion to do that, right? So let's do the information items. And March fund. Okay.
This is maybe an open question, I guess, within the context here, but. Do we do for these type of expenses? And I know at the last meeting, there was like a list of expenses that were approved. Do we do anything that's kind of a budget? You know, apply those to like a budget to actual kind of line item, just to say, you know, cause we can look through this list of expenses, but. I don't, you know, really have any context whether these are kind of within our budgeted, budget allocation or, or not. Is that something that's?
Yeah, so and at the August board meeting, that's when you do your budget meeting. And so all the, the whole budget will be placed in front of you essentially at that point in time. So you'll know where everything's allocated, where everything's going. And then. Pretty, throughout the year, there's percentages of like, this has been taken out of this, it's been taken out of this.
Yeah, I guess.
See that as you're.
I think some of these have parentheses and pause, it's funny.
Are you on the reconciliation? So that was due to. So that was due to the auditor's fine in the previous month. Um, I fixed them in our system. But I didn't realize that I had to fix them with the county as well. So then that spreadsheet looks like we're off, but next month. County, so we should be back on.
I was following that, I was trying to let them know that. Thank you for explaining it.
Do we need, we need to have?
You don't need to do anything.
Nothing on that. So the next thing would be adjournment. All in favor? We need somebody to take notes.
Thanks, thanks guys.